No need to sit down. Good evening and welcome to the June 2nd City Council meeting. Call the meeting to order, and we're going to begin with our invocation. That Councilwoman Keane is going to lead us in. Please rise.
Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts seeking your wisdom and guidance as we serve our community. Bless this council with discernment, compassion, and integrity that every decision will reflect justice, kindness, and fiscal responsibility for the well-being of our citizens. May we work together in you honoring the trust placed in us and striving always to uplift those we represent. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we have our roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Sir, does all the council members have their microphones on red?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman Jones, post one.
I'm here.
Councilman Connor, post two.
Present.
Councilmember Ingram, post three.
Here.
Councilman Massimento, post four.
Here.
Councilman Rossi, post five.
Here.
Councilmember Keane, post six.
Here.
Mayor Lockhart.
I'm here, ma'am.
Sir, we have a quorum.
All right, and a unanimous vote will be six tonight, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And first item is approval of minutes. I hear a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Conner, Mr. Ingram, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to begin with some presentations, and I believe Mr. Marr is going to introduce our first presenter.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Mr. Ben Pierce. Ben comes to us from a wide range of experience. He's worked on this side of the table in Glen County as county engineer.
Drainage and traffic engineer for Glen County.
And now he's in the private world with a company called G W E S LLC. And they are the ones that conducted the drainage investigation for Crooker River Plantation. And he is here to kind of give you an overview of what he found, and then what he's recommended on how to move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ben Pierce.
Thank you, Bobby. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to come and present the information. We were acquired back just a few months ago to investigate the Crooker River Plantation neighborhood, looking at existing deficiencies throughout the neighborhood, as well as proposing some potential improvements. Though those improvements were just concept level, just potential, we presented that information to staff, and we're here to present that information to you all. In your packets, you should have a couple of ledger 11 by 17 inch sheets, colored sheets back and front, or two pages. We'll go through that here in just a moment. We also have my business card. Hopefully, you have that, and you can contact me as you need to for questions. So to start with, we performed an existing conditions deficiency study evaluation throughout the entire neighborhood. This is along Plantation Village Drive, all of the neighborhoods, residences within the right-of-ways, as much as we can get within the easements as we could there on the south side, as well as on the north side near Plantation Drive. Maybe it's a second phase of the development. But in the entirety of Crooker River Plantation, we took a look at the existing features, some of the roadside drainage features and structures that were there. Not a detailed analysis of the conditions of each covert, each manhole, those sort of things, but just to evaluate the types of problems and deficiencies that you all are currently experiencing in that neighborhood, which is quite substantial. In the neighborhood, if you turn to the first page there, just to kind of use the map here as a guide, a lot of what we're seeing on the south side of Plantation Village, you have a lot of ditches that are holding water. You have a lot of shoulders, the grass area there next to the roadway, which is what we call shoulders, a lot of high build-up shoulders, a lot of debris in coverts, some erosion around driveways, some of the driveways that are misaligned, some pipes that are misaligned. Some areas on the south side of the neighborhood, particularly at Cherry Point in Fairfield and Pinedale Court, some of those areas do not even have outfalls. And so that's a significant problem within those portions of the neighborhood. There's also a portion there on Woodlong. If you see on the front cover of your map, the area here along Woodlong does not have an outfall. There's some portions of your neighborhood there that where water is intended to collect within the roadside system does not have an adequate place for that stormwater to leave the neighborhood. So we took a look at a lot of that. We did present and provide an existing deficiencies report, which outlined photographs, maps of aerial maps of those identified deficiencies, a summary report to staff, and I'm sure that they can get that to you as necessary. But following that, then we moved into an evaluation of potential alternatives and improvements within the neighborhood, and that's where we've gotten these two handouts here before you. So the first handout, the first page, is really what I would consider a good first-phase type of improvement in our recommendations, is to first evaluate and address some of the outfall conditions. These are outfall conditions, these are your side roadside, your side outfall ditches, ditches along people's residences, side properties, areas back behind their property, there may be a ditch or an outfall channel that runs behind people's properties. Maintenance on those, improvements and assessments is really where we would recommend the first next level of evaluation happen. Because within the neighborhood itself, you're seeing so much standing water, you're seeing so much inconsistencies in grades between driveway pipes and roadside ditches and outfall ditches, you're seeing such an inconsistency in those elevations and grades, that starting to address that first may lead into areas and the outfalls that may not be achievable in terms of improvement. So that's why we focus on where's all the water, where's all the stormwater going, right? It's going down to Winding Road, there's a large outfall ditch back on the western side of the neighborhood. We have to think in kind of broad scale first, where's all the water supposed to go? Let's try to make some improvements. Our recommendations is to make some improvements to those areas, and then look at more of isolated locations within the roadside, within the neighborhood. So what you have here on the first page, again, is a recommended first phase with priorities. There are some areas within the blue, within the red, and with the green that are what we consider, I would consider, a higher priority locations, because those areas do not currently have outfalls to them. Mainly, as I mentioned before, Cherry Point, Fairfield Drive, Pinedale Court, those areas do not have outfalls, portions of Woodlong. There's an outfall ditch back behind Sunnydale Court, excuse me, Sunnydale Court and Dogwood Circle that can, it can stand to have some improvements made there in evaluation of those. So that's the first phase of improvements that we would recommend. And then if you turn to your next page, these are improvements that, again, are potential. They're not final. We haven't gone through a detailed analysis with topographic information, with utility information, to determine how feasible roadside improvements could be. But this is one approach that could be taken in this next phase, where you're focused on what's in blue, red, green, again, similar to the priorities that we had developed in the first phase. On the top left-hand of your page, you see a couple or a few of the driveway options, right? And so when it comes to trying to achieve some of the city's goals in reducing standing water, improving drainage along the roadway, being able to provide an outfall or drainage along the road sides to the outfalls, these are improvements that have, could work in some areas, but we don't know the extent of how much these could work without a more detailed analysis. So our concept here is just what we were doing and performing in this evaluation is just conceptually, what can we do, what's possible to do within the roadside areas throughout the neighborhood? And then what are some phase approaches to making those improvements? So that's really kind of the bulk of what we've done. Again, a deficiencies report, which staff has, details a lot of the site photographs, more of a micro-analysis of each roadway, each neighborhood, portion of the neighborhood, and then with the outline here of the improvements. So with that, I'm able to take some questions or thoughts.
So, understanding that the priority one projects would be the, where we'd see the most benefit from improving the backbone, you know, of the drainage system.
Yes, sir.
Everything's going to end up there eventually, and if that's not cleaned and flowing, then obviously, we're going to have backups worse, you know, as the situation goes on.
Correct.
So our next step, then, would be some specific engineering on those areas to really kind of detail what's.
I think, I think so, yes, sir. That's the realistic next step, is to have some survey, take a look at grades within these specific areas, to see how much outfall improvements can be made in that first phase. Yes, sir.
Were there any recommendations that kind of came through that were, I guess, more immediate actionably, you know, where we could take action, kind of more immediate, like just cleaning of existing, those types of things? Or what did y'all kind of find there?
Yes, sir. There were areas that we identified for the city staff to at least go out and take a look and see what can be done with the forces that they have, cleaning that existing outfall ditches, or, you know, trying to open up, maybe removing vegetation, that sort of thing. So we did make those recommendations to staff. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I got one. Have you found out, are any of the yards in that area lower than the roads?
Yes, sir. We did identify a few of these areas, particularly, sorry, I'm trying to look and talk into the microphone, particularly around Westgate Circle.
Right.
There's some areas in that front portion of the neighborhood where it's really hard to tell where the finished floor is and where the road is, you know, in terms of differentials. In some areas, it's a little more prominent, but in a lot of areas here in this southern portion of the first portion of the neighborhood, yeah, it's very flat, the yard's really flat, the finished floor's fairly level with the roadway.
So what would you say is the likelihood that those yards are going to drain into the ditches?
Um.
And what is the plan for that?
Yes, sir. So the likelihood of it, it's going to drain the way that it is now, particularly in this portion of the neighborhood on Westgate and Piper Cove, they're inverted crown roadways. So all of the drainage along the frontage of people's lots is intended to drain into the middle of the road. That's why you have the inlets there in the middle of the road. Off of personal property, that's a policy issue.
So you're saying the culverts are lower than their property?
No, sir. In these areas here that we've identified on Westgate Circle and Piper Cove, on the southern portion of the front neighborhood, those are inverted crown roadways. So that means that the, all the yard drainage goes out into the middle of the road, and there are no driveway culverts necessarily.
So, excuse me, you're saying that, pardon me, the only thing we can do in that southern neighborhood is make sure that the outfalls are cleaned out, and the water should run toward those outfalls on the roadway?
Well, that's the intent of the design of this portion of the neighborhood, of Westgate and Piper Cove. What it appears is that the intent of this, of this design in this portion of the neighborhood is for the yard to run toward the road, the drainage to run from the yard into the road, into the inlets, and out to the outfall. Or if there isn't an inlet, then it runs down the middle of the road into the outfall. That's the, what appears to be the intended method.
But, but on the other hand, if the slab is lower than the road, and the dirt is lower than the road, that water's not going to run to the road. Am I correct?
In an ideal situation, yes, sir, that's correct.
Were y'all able to assess the health of those drains system in the roads? I mean, as far as, are they open, not open, clogged, you know, I mean?
Yes, sir. So, what can I say? Driveway culverts, yes, there was a lot of areas where culverts were clogged, some areas where the covert was too short compared to the driveway. The driveway was, let's say, 15 feet wide. Your covert was just barely past that. So with those sort of situations, you're seeing a lot of undermining underneath the driveway, right? In some cases, where you have a fairly long driveway pipe, maybe there's sediment and buildup in front of those pipes. So in either situation, it's a deficiency, in a sense, you either have undermining and erosion underneath the driveway, or you have a clogged drainage system that, yes, sir.
But in this, in particular, in this Piper Cove area?
Yes, Piper Cove, those.
Those drainage pipes underneath the roads, do we know how open they are?
Piper Cove particularly, we do not see any driveway culverts, because the intent.
You're talking about the drain in the road?
The drain in the roads.
Are those pipes, you know, are those outfalls open to allow draining?
Yes, sir. So with, in Piper Cove, I do not recall seeing any culverts in the middle of the road, any inlets. I think, I think it was all just draining into the middle of the road, and then down the middle of the road into the outfall, back behind the Dollar General, that particular neighborhood, yes.
And that ditch behind that goes down Winding Road, that's the main collection for a lot of this?
That is the main collection for all of your southern portion of the entire neighborhood.
Is that ditch in fairly good shape that y'all set?
I think there has been some maintenance on it, and we recommended some maintenance, and I think that's been performed. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, council? All right. Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe we might have some gentlemen from the missing in action and president wore a flag. Want to speak? Please give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Tom Bowler, and I live on Stable Alley, 104 Stable Alley. And I just wanted to bring it up today, and it's like every Memorial Day we do, there's one thing we always forget, we forget to fly the POW MIA flag. And I would just like to see if the council would approve it to like on Memorial Day, Veterans Day, POW MIA Day, if we would fly the flag for them. I think it would be a good thing.
Yep, yes, sir.
Yes, absolutely.
That's very appropriate. Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you. That was easy.
Roger. Thank you so much.
You got it right. Artie Johnson, or Artie Jones, excuse me, asked me to speak.
What's your name?
Roger Rio, 605 Wheeler Street.
Bring the microphone down.
Why?
Bring it down. You got it, bud.
Okay, my name is Roger Rio, 605 Wheeler Street, St. Mary's. Some of y'all know me, some of y'all don't. I'm with the VFW and stuff down here, and we do a lot of different things. And this week, we had a great Memorial Day. And I don't know if, I know Greg, you attended, and Artie attended, and a couple of others might have, we didn't see them. But it was pretty big. It was probably the biggest group we've seen. With the population increases that you guys have had in St. Mary's, come veterans, a lot of veterans, and we're seeing that at the VFW. We are over 900 strong. You're the largest VFW post in the state. I don't know if you guys knew that, but you are the largest, over 900. Nobody else has that. And we have young people. So we're trying to get more, encourage more of these guys. So Memorial Day was a big success. And then we followed it up with the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Celebration, which was really pushed by the post commander, Patsy Schreiber. She, this was her baby, she wanted it done, and she wanted to make sure it was done right. So lo and behold, somebody comes to us with a riverboat that was in Vietnam, actually served on the rivers in Vietnam. If you went by the waterfront, you saw a bunch of people down there getting on and off that boat. Well, that's what they were doing. They gave out rides, and everybody enjoyed it. There was kids, there was parents, grandparents, old people, young people. So everybody had a good time riding the riverboats, and I think it showed a lot what St. Mary's could do. We have a big military tradition here in St. Mary's. The MIA flag and all that is very important to us. I don't know if y'all know the numbers, but 1,200 Vietnamese missing in action still. But World War II, Korea and Vietnam together, 81,000 MIAs are still on the list. Hazelhurst got one, a few weeks back at Hazelhurst, they received the remains of a veteran from Korea. So, you know, we still need to honor these guys, and we really appreciate the flag, and look forward to talking more with Artie and Robbie. I'd already talked to Robbie once, talking about Memorial. We've been maintaining that little memorial over there by the railroad tracks with the flags. Doug, Doug Vaught and I were talking, and he said, if you guys will take care of it, man, you know, appreciate it. So we've been taking care of that. And we asked if you guys could look into it and see, maybe we could have that as a memorial, and we'll take care of it for y'all, if y'all want to do it. And I think that's important. We have a lot of military here, very strong, so we need that memorial. And Greg, I think their daddy was the one that pushed it when we had it downtown. They wanted it downtown. So, you know, I think it's important for us to go through with that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Thank you, Roger. This was really a heartwarming affair. I don't know if a lot of people can remember, but especially the veterans during our era, we're the only group that came home without a welcome. And after 50 years, we were officially welcomed by the VFW. I can't say enough about the veterans that fought in that war, and to come home and receive the treatment that they did from our people in town. It was devastating, but it was a great occasion, and I wanted for you to tell Patsy, we really appreciate what she did. And we had our congressman, he spoke that Saturday also, Buddy Carter. And I asked our clerk if she, would you mind reading this, Ms. Debbie?
Yes, sir. According to the 1998 Defense Authorization Act, Congress specified that the POW MIA flag would fly each year on six national days of observance. The federal law was clarified in 2019, when President Donald J. Trump signed Public Law 116-67, amending the days on which the POW MIA flag is displayed on federal property, also known as the National POW MIA Flag Act. The law amended Title 36 of U.S. Code, Section 902, to state that the POW MIA flag displayed days are all days on which the flag of the United States is displayed. And the VW leadership stated, "Our nation leaders made a pledge to account for every service member who do not come home. This is a pledge which also holds true for today's servicemen and women. We must always ensure that if they do fall in battle, they are not forgotten, and our nation will do everything in its power to bring them home."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All of these guys, all they're asking for is to give them permission to fly, pile a flag, and I don't think that we have anybody on the board that have any opposition.
None whatsoever.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is a proclamation of the city's commitment to zero roadway deaths. So I'll read that. "Whereas the safety and well-being of all residents and visitors of the city of St. Mary's are of paramount importance, and whereas the city of St. Mary's recognizes that roadway fatalities and serious injuries are preventable, and that every life lost on our roads is a tragedy, and whereas the city of St. Mary's is committed to creating a safe and sustainable transportation system that protects all road users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, public transportation users, motorists, and commercial operators, and whereas the city of St. Mary's acknowledges the importance of adopting a vision-zero approach, which prioritizes the elimination of all roadway fatalities and serious injuries through a combination of engineering, education, enforcement, and engagement strategies, and whereas the city of St. Mary's will implement evidence-based, high-impact strategies to improve roadway safety, including traffic calming measures, enhanced crosswalks, protected bike lanes, and intersection improvements, and whereas the city of St. Mary's will engage with a variety of public and private stakeholders, including community members, local businesses, and government agencies, to collaboratively develop and implement a comprehensive action plan for achieving zero roadway deaths, and whereas the city of St. Mary's will prioritize the safety needs of underserved communities, ensuring that investments are directed toward areas with higher needs for safety improvements, and whereas the city of St. Mary's will adopt innovative technologies to enhance roadway safety and build evidence around what works, and whereas the city of St. Mary's will continuously evaluate the effectiveness of safety interventions and make data-driven decisions to achieve the goal of zero roadway deaths. Now therefore, I, Gregory Lockhart, Mayor of the City of St. Mary's, do hereby proclaim the citizens of the city of St. Mary's commitment to achieving zero roadway deaths and serious injuries, call upon all residents, businesses, and stakeholders to join us in this vital effort to create a safer, healthier, and more sustainable community for all." So we have a board announcement of some vacancies due to, or term of expirations in the St. Mary's Library Board. There are two positions there. Board appointment for new board, we have the tax allocation District Number Three Advisory Board, there's still one seat available there, and board appointment, term expiration for the Camden County Board of Education Sex Education and Structural Review Committee, and the St. Mary's Library Board for Denise Proctor. And I believe we have a application to consider for the library board. Is there a motion?
Show of hands.
Motion by Mr. Rossi, is there?
Second.
Second by Ms. Keane. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we would like to welcome Ms. Angela Girardi to the library board. Thank you. And if you have any interest in the other, another boards that I mentioned, you know, please see Ms. Walker read about an application. And so now we're ready for our financial report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. You have in your, excuse me, council packets, an overview of the city's revenue and expenditure report for April 2025, which is the 10th month of the fiscal year, FY '25. These reports are on a cash basis. Are there any questions?
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any update on receiving our, is it FEMA money?
The FEMA money, no, I think we're still, Bobby, do you have any update on that? Just, we're still in the holding pattern?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been submitted. They've had some applications being issued.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clicken. And we will now have a report of our city manager made by our assistant city manager as Mr. Horton is on vacation this week.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. Try to keep it brief. Just want to go over a few things, highlights for the week. I want to share that bulk trash pickup starting July, the first week of July, will change. So bulk will now be picked up on your normally scheduled trash days. So instead of calling the city and requesting a bulk item, and you may wait one to five business days. If your trash service starts on Monday, then that'll be your bulk day also. So they'll be picking up bulk on the same day every week. This is going to fix a lot of things. This is going to allow some beautification for our neighborhoods, but this is also going to help tie up some of our customer service ladies up front. Instead of taking bulk orders, it's just going to be an automatic. So there will be a media campaign starting the second week of June to get the education piece out there. One of the things I do want to highlight, though, is if the truck pulls up to your house and say you got a refrigerator and there's Freon on it, they will put a tag on it. It'll have a code. And they'll say, "We couldn't pick up this item at this time," but you can call the City of St. Mary's. And so if you give, if it's code four, you give that to the ladies up front, and they'll be able to specifically tell you what code violation that was. And it could be, Freon has to be removed before they can remove a refrigerator. There's things like they don't pick up tires, such like that. But the majority of the items should be picked up on a timely manner. And how they're going to do that is your trash truck will start on one end of the route, and then your bulk items will actually start on the opposite, and they'll just cross paths. So, we're hoping this is going to change some heartburn with the bulk items. Everything else will remain the same. But I look forward to our, look at our social media and stuff like that. You'll see a lot of information coming out. Sinkhole on Highway 40. Public Works employees noticed a dip in the asphalt on the north side of the highway. This is heading east on, by the railroad tracks. Some inspection had determined that the manhole behind the curb leaked, it was leaking, creating a sinkhole at the edge of the outside of the lane on the westbound side highway. Georgia Department of Transportation came out. They've submitted the emergency permits. Long story short, GDOT is rushing this so that we can get these corrected. This is the second sinkhole that we've experienced in the last couple of weeks. It is on the same line, but it is a coincidence. It's not, one's not causing the other one. And what it is, is as far as those manholes, when they were put in, they were put in around the same time. So this is, it's kind of normal issues for us to be experiencing. It just happens to be, you know, two right back-to-back off the side of the road. So, those are getting repaired. You'll notice the roads blocked off in those areas. But GDOT is rushing that. So we should be able to see some repairs coming pretty quickly.
Do we anticipate that they're going to be able to keep traffic flow at one lane through there while construction's going on? Yes?
Yep. That is correct. Cumberland Island Parking Lot, Start Day was today. So Cumberland Island National Seashore. The parking lot located in downtown, across from our park. They are going to be redoing that. That is a project that will carry most of the year. And then we have a substitute parking, which is located next to the cemetery. So, I'll read through the mainland parking rehabilitation starting Monday, which is today. The project is anticipated to take approximately six months to complete. Alternate parking will be coordinated with the Cumberland Island National Seashore while the parking lot is closed. The alternate will be available next to Oak Grove Cemetery on Barlet. Overnight parking is permitted, but we do ask, and we will police the area to make sure that we're not blocking any roadways or such. But we do look forward to that renovation being done on that parking lot. It's going to be a nice addition downtown. So, we're excited about it. National Water Safety Month is wrapping up. So May's National Water Safety Month comes to a close. There was a proclamation made by the governor for the state of Georgia, making May the National Water Safety Month. Aquatic Center wanted to highlight that they had over 80 students for swimming lessons and began teaching them today, started their first swimming lessons. But with 80 strong in the class, there's students of all ages wishing to learn. Plans are in place to continue the lessons throughout the rest of the season. So we invite, whether you're one years old or you're 90 years old, if you need some swimming lessons, come on down. Just as a stat, in 2024, nearly a quarter of a million people worldwide died from drownings. Specifically, in the United States, it was an average of 4,012 individuals for unintentional drowning deaths annually. So if you're not familiar with swimming, you need a little extra help, come down to the park, and we'll be happy to help you out with that. Lightning strikes citywide. St. Mary's experienced our fair share. Last couple of weeks, the storms, if I'm sure everybody's noticed, has been pretty nasty. St. Mary's experienced multiple lightning strikes, including a tornado warning a few days ago, causing sporadic power outages and minor structural damage. As a city, we experienced problems with the waterfront cameras and issues with the police department, including some electronic equipment malfunctioning. Security gate, we're working to get these items repaired quickly. We did have some remedies to electric with the gate and stuff to make sure that that was functional. And we experienced a lift station on winding road went down. And Public Works personnel was out there into the evening getting that resolved as well. Senior Center Chrome Box Lab, a new Chrome Box computer lab was installed, starred in the St. Mary's Senior Center this week. This project was made possible through the Hospital Authority and serve as a vital resource for digital literacy, telehealth access, and social connectivity for our seniors. So the seniors are getting five new computers. We also have a class that they can sign up for to help them navigate through social media and things like that using the technology. So we're pretty excited for them. Police Department during May, St. Mary's Police Department answered 300, or 3,274 calls of service. They conducted 1,318 security checks, 58 arrests, eight for narcotics, and three for DUI. They also conducted 491 traffic stops and issued 207 citations. The Criminal Investigations Division was assigned 21 cases, none of which were cleared by arrest. Detectives assigned to our Internet Crimes Against Children. Task Force conducted one investigation locally, which led to an arrest of an offender. And also with the other task force members, with the investigations in the county, the detective assigned to JCAT assisted in the recovery of a child that was kidnapped in Savannah. The child was found and recovered in Kingsland, Georgia. Library and the St. Mary's Aquatic Center. We had a touch of truck this weekend at the library. It was very successful. We introduced 250 citizens to walk into the library. And we also had a rubber duck race with the Rotary Club at the Aquatic Park. Just want to also put out there, hurricane season began yesterday. So in 2025, the Atlantic hurricane season officially began. Emergency management has updated evacuation plans and communication protocols. Residents are being urged to review the emergency kits and stay informed through the official city channels. You can stay tuned on the city's website or social media, as well as the Camden County's social media websites or local TV and radio stations of your choice. The county has Code Red. If you have not signed up for that, we encourage that. We encourage citizens to sign up for the Camden County, from the Camden County website. Please familiarize yourself with the routes and have a plan in place in case the need arises. And that includes the report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Okay. Now set the consent agenda. Under New Business, Item A, Resolution to Remove and Redesignate Section State Route 40 from State Highway System. Item B, the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget ordinance? Item C, time clock plus multi-year contract? Item D, the St. Mary's Police Department Axon Body Camera Docking Station Lease Agreement? Item E, Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Application, U.S. Department of Transportation? And F, we need to talk about the Town Hall. So, on the consent agenda, we have Item A, C, D, and E. So we'll now open the meeting for the public. So if you, any comments you'd like to speak about items on or off the agenda? Please give us your name and address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes.
Well, Alex Nelson, 500 Macintosh Drive. I'd just like to speak in support of both the Vision Zero proclamation, and then also, along with that, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. I'm an avid cyclist, and in fact, I rode my bicycle here from the house. I'm also the secretary of the Camden Cycling Club. And I realize that, you know, these grants, this is a planning and demonstration grant, is necessary to unlock further grants to actually build this infrastructure. So I'm really excited for that and hope to see some good things. Thank you.
Leader of White, 102 Silas Court. On Item A, as I read in the packet, the main reason we wanted to de-designate it as a state route was so that the city can do more with the parking on the streets, on Osborne Street. And that's the thing I need to talk to you about. Depends on what kind of parking you want to have along that road. Right now, the only diagonal parking, excuse me, is in front of Coddle and Gunn. And that's a dangerous spot, also in front of the antique store is diagonal parking. So this diagonal parking is really dangerous. Because a lot of people like to zoom along on Osborne Street. And if you're not careful, when you back out, you're going to get hit. So take in consideration what kind of parking you want to have there along Osborne Street. The second thing is, you did a presentation on drainage problems that you have. Are you going to put this presentation on the website so the citizens can see it? We didn't get to see that. And last item, last fall, y'all had a company doing a lot of surveying on Mittler Drive for the sewer line for Exit 1 project that's going in. You want to connect that, the lift station at Exit 1 to the lift station there on Colrain. I'd like to know when you're going to do that, when it's going to even start. You did the marking last fall, and now that the school is out on Merrily-Clark, this would be a good time to start it if it's possible. The way the government operates, it looks like you're not going to get started until at least the fall or in the mid-winter. And that's going to be a bad time, because you've got a lot of school traffic there along Merrily-Clark, and you're going to do roadwork there with sewer lines. Thank you.
I got my hourglass this time.
Can I hold it for you?
I'll be all right.
Now I turn it off, you know?
I want to make sure drained out completely. But, um, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. But it's either the 816 River View Drive. You know, I would prefer that when you did that presentation, that you would have been right there, we could see it. And, you know, Mr. Rice spoke about it, but I figured that, you know, I thought about looking for something here, but I couldn't see anything. And so, you know, you know what I'm talking about, right?
No, sir. I didn't hear.
If you put the, put what you were talking, speaking about on those screens, so we could see it. All right? The St. Mary's Water Park, I think it's very important that we have that water park. And our last thing was 3-3, and the mayor went ahead and broke the deadlock. We want to privatize. I would like to do that, too. But I tell you what, I'd be hate, you know, I'd take my granddaddy over there. And, you know, all them kids over there playing, having a good time, blowing their nose up in the water and everything. I sit there and I look at it, because I remember I went through that. And I'm like, I'd hate for us not to be able to have that park open. And that's all I'm going to say about that. I want to talk about the event we had Saturday at PBR, the patrol boat. Beautiful. I'm not seeing Mr. Roger here. Oh, man, you didn't show up. Oh! I'm like, I couldn't, and I ain't see you, man. But I didn't see you. You didn't show up. You was? Oh, because, okay. All right. So I took that beard off and threw me off. But that was a beautiful, you know, I was so, you know, my wife, she was, she was in and out of Vietnam. But she don't like to come to know those things. I pull her in. You know, I mean, I pull her in to come and go. Because, again, like, we talked about the fact that we were treated badly. So we're not going to get into that anymore. But we have been treating right now, and hopefully that, you know, Mr. Jones, Congressman Jones was there, and I thought maybe some of you folks would have been there, Mayor, because it was hell in your city, you know? And what's his name, Congressman Buddy Carter was there. And I'm like, oh, I think we could get a little more support action in there. You know, so keep that in mind.
I was there the previous Saturday when he wasn't.
Oh, is that right?
On Memorial Day.
Oh, okay. All right, all right, all right. So, I want to look into the, when we have any meetings for workshops, do you guys allow us to ask questions when you have any workshops?
I think so, yeah.
So what's the purpose of having a workshop meeting and then we're there? It makes no sense. You know what I mean? So keep that in mind, guys. Because, I mean, a lot of stuff is going on. You know, we could chime in. So we have to do it now. For example, we talking about the, what do you call it? Where we docking the boats? And, you know, we need to slow roll. We just started it. And we complaining already. I know people complaining, but they just started a roll. So for folks who complaining, give it a year, man. Give it some time. I think it's going to work out. We need to have that Marina thing there. I don't care if you look at it. That's my opinion. You know what I mean? The JDA, the JDA, man, you know, I supported that JDA. I meant JDA, Jacob Jacobi. And I saw where the JDA finally taking some action and doing some legal stuff to get this thing going in the right direction. I think we need that. I want to talk about this Senior Center. I go over there, and one of the things I think, I know they didn't, they decided to do the parking lot. They still need to do the lines, and it's still not, it's still not open. And the next thing was food, lunch. I pretty much, I go over there and we eat. I know they used in the school lunch, and I think Mr. Connor was there, and he kind of asks people about it. And I kind of, eh, I kind of hear and hope, but the point is, we need to get a good food service action going. I mean, some of the other guys up in there, man, come on, man, they need some good food. That stuff from the school? So, just think about that. That's what I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Clicken.
Hi, I'm Larry Newton, and I live at 311 Bartlett Street. I've got just a few questions. Glad Mr. Pierce did go over to Crooked River. I thought it was quite interesting, is it? I was a member of the Stormwater Task Force. And there was five or six of us. Bobby knows who I am. And a lot of people know that I was on the task force. And I've had people ask me questions. With regards to what you found at Crooked River, we did a tour on May 23rd, 2019. And of the locations that we went, we looked at Shalalani Sugar Mill, Mission Trace, and Crooked River. And what you found was pretty much what had been assessed quite some while ago. And this is a statement that was in some of our notes, that the residential ambition has severe issues due to poor design and construction. There are invalid cranes, crushed culverts, flat... There are invalid cranes, culverts, flat ditches along the roadway. Walkways cause the streets and homes to be flooded. And they asked us to remove vegetation around ditches and et cetera. And a lot of the property was a lack of maintaining the stormwater ditches, okay? And all of you may or may not know what the difference is between a tidal ditch or tidal creek versus a regular stormwater ditch. The stormwater ditch is basically open, and you can, we as a homeowner, we are given the privilege of maintaining those, mowing them and et cetera. But the problem is, is they become clouded up with debris. Anyway, my question is, we put in about, about two and a half, two years of work on the task force, stormwater task force. And I've had people ask me questions, what is being done and what are we, whatever happened to the task force? And right now, I can't answer that question because I don't know either. Anyway, my background, I'm a chemist. I also was a manager of environmental testing of outfalls and things like that. So I did have a little background in this. So I'm simply asking, we did come up with a fee for the stormwater issue. And that fee, I think, Bobby, if I'm right or wrong, I can't remember, but I think it was $5. And that was to pay for some crews and equipment, et cetera. Right now, one of the things I do see a lot of is we're using too much rotary mowers that throw debris into the waterways, which affects both the COD and BOD. I know you know what that is, right? Anyway, I see that happening quite a bit to ditches. And I think the last time I ever saw a ditch cleaned, for me, or on Bartlett Street, was probably about 10, 11 years ago. So anyway, I just would like to, either, let's get back on to looking at the whole picture of the entire city for taking care of our drainage, okay?
Yes, sir. Maybe I can address a couple of things, Mr. Newton. We, you know, we had a work session last Thursday night. It was an opportunity to bring some of the new council members that weren't around when that was originally done, you know, kind of up to speed. You know, we have, this new council has already put in, you know, forth previous to hire another second ditch crew dedicated, you know, to this issue. We've also budgeted for some new equipment in the upcoming budget that we'll be addressing here shortly, including an auger to potentially clean out culverts and those kinds of things, as well as a new street sweeper to keep leaves and debris from getting down into the culverts and cracking the drain system. And so those are a few of the steps that we've undertaken, as well as some cleaning that's been going on by the ditch crews out in several of the neighborhoods already. But, you know, our commitment, you know, like I say, the stormwater ordinance was passed by the previous council back four or five years ago now, but no fee was put in place. And so it's basically just an.
Yeah, that was 2022.
Right. And so, you know, we've made the commitment at the meeting last week that we're going to return very shortly with implementing of that fee structure. Just had everybody a chance to digest the information presented to them last week. So we do hope to have some significant movement coming soon on this process that's been, that you yourself and the stormwater task force members have put a lot of time into, and we realize we have a problem, and we are moving forward on it, for sure.
Well, it's good to hear. I highly endorse progress on addressing this. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Rogers Shaw, 30th and Airmark Court. This is going to be short and sweet. At the last city council meeting, I came up and spoke about the bushes on Colrain and Wynd Road, that you could not see the traffic coming out there. Well, lo and behold, those bushes were cleared. And so between Mr. Seals, the contrary, my bushes, I just tell people out there in YouTube land, they come to the city council, and they will listen to you. So maybe a little thing, but I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a point of interest.
Your name and address, please, Ms. Seals.
Dave Schmitz, 112 New Amex Circle, Shattilaan. Just a side note, I don't believe the ditches in Shattilaan subdivision have been cleaned since literally 1990. Just, it's red.
Yeah, the mic's red, and it should be green. Hit the button. There you go.
Okay, I get to say that again. As a point of interest, I don't believe the ditches in Shattilaan subdivision have been cleaned since 1991. Again, the DOT is doing a wonderful job of putting paint down and leaving piles of rubbish in the middle of the intersections. But they still don't have the arrows, the directional arrows in the intersection at Is the only reason that we're redesignating Highway 40 between Gallup and Church Street for parking? No. Okay, so.
The process started before me, but, you know, I understand that if we wanted to do any landscaping changes to the road as well, like medians or anything like that, you know, wouldn't be able to do that if it was, you know, DOT road. So it gives the city some flexibility as they move forward with potential landscaping or, like I say, restriping the parking spaces the way we may be better, so.
Mr. Mayor, as soon as you said that, my mind did a hard left, and somebody else was talking about diagonal parking, and we're going to put medians in the middle, too? Okay.
Well, even mitigation, things we were talking about here, about slowing traffic down and different things like that, that you could not do if it was a state highway, but, you know, things that will be open, you know, if the city owns the road.
And I did a little research and discussing with some folks, and the city of St. Mary's and cities of similar size are very divergent in how much money they spend on recreation. And I'm sure somebody will jump me that I get this number wrong, but keep in mind in orders of magnitude, the city of St. Mary's would be spending maybe $500,000 annually on recreation, and many, if not most, of the cities of our size in the state of Georgia spend $2 million. Just something to think about. The stormwater management issue, as soon as it started being discussed again, people coming out of the woodwork about why they shouldn't have to pay it, entire neighborhoods. And I'm not positive that I'm factually correct here, but I understand that places like Ashby Cove, who have all those ditches or lakes or whatever they call them everywhere, would be exempt from that as a unit. I would just like to point out that I live on the marsh, and the water in the Atlantic Ocean is going to have to rise a whole bunch before I don't have runoff into the marsh, into the river, and into the ocean. So if we're going to exempt people, I'm signing up.
I don't, no one, no one would be exempt.
No one would be exempt.
There are some credits that can happen due to onsite retention ponds and some other kinds of things. But no one will be exempt because everyone, except for undeveloped property, which will not be, have a fee associated with it, every property has some sort of runoff, and it's not just about stormwater, it's also about what's going back into the rivers and streams. But yes, there may be some credits, but they will not, they nor no other neighborhood will be totally exempt from some fees. It always depends on stormwater green initiatives and retention ponds and other things that might be on the property. There's a credit manual that's associated with this.
For commercial property, but no one would be exempt.
Right.
Okay, great.
Even churches will have to pay.
Say again?
I said even churches will have to pay.
Oh, okay.
As will the city and the school.
So day before yesterday, I got this letter in the mail, and I was, and I was all excited because it says the city of St. Mary's on it. And right in the window, it says, response requested. And I thought, damn, Dave, you've arrived. The city wants an answer for you by something. So imagine my disappointment when I looked at, this is either number three or number four. And, you know, you're going to say, well, you throw away all your other ads and junk. Well, I think this is harassment.
Yeah.
And it's, I know it's not city-sponsored, but they sure let you believe that it is.
There is a contract that cannot be canceled till closer to the end of the year. It's on my calendar, believe me. But we can't do anything about it until it's time for the contract to renew, and that was in place before we got here, so. But thank you for bringing it up again.
Hey, no problem. Count on me to help you out. Along that line, I thought, well, you know, Dave, just don't go to the meeting and just, you know, be all dreary and dopey about it. Do some research. So I said, I'll call USAA. They'll probably have me covered for all that stuff in my umbrella policy. They don't. So I said, well, can you recommend somebody that's credible and, you know, kind of sponsored by USAA? We can't. So I challenge anybody else who has home and auto and all that kind of junk, check with their insurance companies. Maybe we all need to move to whoever you've got if they'll come and fix your broken pipes. And the last thing, I think it's the last thing. Do we have contact with the guy that owns the waterfront, the Dodgers guy?
No, sir, not direct contact.
Is it possible to find out how to get ahold of him? Because I had this really good idea. He's a, he's a really, really rich guy, and we need to get money to use for the swimming pool complex over there, and maybe even the old place. He could, you know, kick up a million bucks or something and fix that. And we'll never know if he'd say no unless we ask him. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's hard to stick up to that one. But anyway, I think, you know I'm here to talk about tennis courts. So with him saying that, I think I might just have to, since we're going nowhere fast with recreation, I might just have to call Mark Walters, see if he'll do the tennis courts. What do you guys think about?
Your money is in the budget.
Is it? Okay, but actually, I'm disappointed about that because I've been waiting two years. But no, I'm going to just voice my opinion about something that I'm very incredibly disappointed about, and that's my dear, dear friend being fired from working at the Marina. I don't think, you people understand what a delightful resource this man was for the city of St. Mary's. He loved this town, loves this town, and he promoted this town. He took people from their boats all over town on the golf court promoting every single business. Farm to Family, the pizza place, everything, and was wonderful. And I just, I know there's some ridiculous reason he was fired, I don't want to even get into that. But then I started thinking, prior to him being fired, David was fired, another delightful asset to this town. And I'm not quite sure why we're firing people that bring so much joy to the people of this town and to the visitors of this town. So maybe somewhere along the way, you can explain that to people, because there's a lot of us that are very, very disappointed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Christine Adama, 901 Ian Street, St. Mary's. I have a couple of issues. And I'm going to do a lot of follow-up because I think everything I'm going to say has already been said, I'm just kind of summarizing. I'm delighted that all of you are going to be discussing approval of this budget. Because what was circulated in the packet leaves those of us that have been looking at those numbers amazed. I moved here three years ago. The city had an operating budget a little over $20 million. The proposed budget is at $26 million plus. That's almost 20% increase in three years. I'm a little flabbergasted. We have a little over 18,000 residents. That's a lot of money for an increase over three years. So if you deep dive with the numbers that were put in the packet to look at, there's a lot of misleading numbers. One of them is a statement of revenue for 3.5 million for a building. I think, I'm assuming, the way that got stated was this building.
That's incorrect.
But could you tell me what the 3.5?
I cannot at this point because it's a real estate matter, so.
Okay. Has it been done already, and is the writing already signed?
I really can't go into it.
Because if the writing's already been signed, then it is revenue, and then why don't we know about that? That's not being transparent. Where's that deal being done, and by whom, and for what? Makes no sense. Doesn't look too honest to me. Then there's a $5 million ask for renovation in the new building that we're all moving to. When I think, as I remember, I went to a city council meeting about a month, a year and a half ago, it was about 1.8 million expected, and that was what was presented to us at a council meeting. I know some of you weren't on council, but four of you were. That's a big difference. Where are we going to make that difference up from? Are we going to take that from the equity fund, which is about 14 million? Not a whole lot of money to be playing around with. So how are we going to renovate that? For $5 million, when bids are coming in at 7.2, when we talked about 1.8? Big disparity again. I mean, that's enough to shock you, as is a 20% increase in an operating. very hard to look at those numbers and make any sense. I have been up here repeatedly to talk about asset management. The marina's still losing money, but on the numbers presented in that packet, it looks, you know, we're balancing it out. We're not, we're not making money in that marina. We fired a really good employee for no cause. All right. Six hours before his probation period was up. Did he lie? No. Did he steal? Not that I could find out. Did he, is he guilty of insubordination? Not that I'm aware of. Did he refuse to do business for anybody coming out about? Not that I'm aware of. All grounds for immediate termination. Was he warned? Nope. Was he sat down and coached? Nope. Why was he fired? Because he happened to be going to dinner with his wife and a weekly event where he also treats a homeless man for dinner at a local restaurant, wearing a marina shirt, and he ordered a drink. Really? Seriously? A man who has positive contribution to this city is well-loved by many of the local businesses and hasn't breached any personnel policies? Wasn't counseled, pulled aside, or warned? I think you have a litigation there other than the fact he was on probation, but that seems to me to be exorbitant, to fire somebody because of that. Doesn't make sense at all. The aquatic center. Yes, I totally agree with all the statements. We do need an aquatic center. It's good for the kids, Mr. Connor. But it loses money and we don't own the property and it's mismanaged. And you've taken money, Mr. Mayor, from the equity fund to subsidize the deficit. Once again, mismanagement. There are personnel issues here. Big personnel issues. We're a city in transition, and I keep harping on that. We need skill sets that can manage transition. We don't have that. So hopefully, when you do your reviews of key managers in this city, you've made note of that, that we're making stupid mistakes, that we're opening ourselves to litigation, that we're out of control fiscally, that we're losing money, and we're on a negative trend in terms of fiscal management of this city. Your overseers, I keep telling you that, you have a city management team that's not performing. It needs change. You need to save some money quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
And the way that you do that is to get rid of top-level expensive personnel that aren't fiscally responsible.
Thank you for your comments.
I was going to give you solutions, but you know what? When I do, nobody ever calls me and says, "Can I sit down and talk with you about your solutions?" So I will honor your five minutes. Only two people have ever called me to follow up on anything I've said. I invite all of you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close the public comment section and we'll go to the approval of the consent agenda. So to remind everyone, we had on the consent items A, C, D, and E. I'll entertain a motion.
Some moves.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ingram and a second by Mr. Connors.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam, that's unanimous.
Yes, sir.
So our first item for discussion is the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget ordinance. Yep, go ahead while Ms. Klinken's coming up. Go ahead and do it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ingram and a second by Mr. Connors. So is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. King?
I just want to explain why I am not going to be voting to approve this budget. And I know there's been a lot of hard work put into it, and I appreciate all of that. But there are some things on here that give me a lot of pause. One is the $3.5 million revenue item, which is a real estate transaction. But I could see this item being included in a forecast where you have different scenarios, one of which might include the sale of real estate, which would allow you to do certain things, which would be spending possibly more money on the renovation of our city hall. But I'm concerned that we have $6 million in the budget for that. Now, many of you know, some of you don't, that we opened bids on our current plans for the renovation, and they were $10 million. So there are some that will say that because of that, we need the $6 million in there. But if you do remember, we were told when the building was acquired that we could get in there for 1.8. Now, that was a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and things do get more expensive. So I could see that that 1.8 could be a little over 2 million, 3 million possibly. But having that line item in the budget now gives me a lot of pause. I think we need to go back to the drawing board on that. I have said that during the budget work sessions. And the other thing that we don't have yet, which we're working on, is a capital, a comprehensive capital improvement plan that lets us know what infrastructure assets need to be replaced and what needs to be maintained. So I think, you know, if we're prudent, looking at our population growth, which is coming, and our infrastructure, I cannot in good conscience with my background vote on this budget.
Any others?
I echo Council Lady King and with the respect of the money that we may be getting in a land sales, unless it's taxable or unless we have it in hand, I don't think that we need to speculate on money that may not, may not happen.
Is your microphone on, sir?
It's on.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I gotta say something. I have been in conversation with a couple council, or a couple citizens, and why I'm totally in favor of moving the city hall, moving into the new building. I have to be a realistic person here, and I have to share some things from the heart. Why I want the new city council, new city council chambers to be awesome, the new city house all to be awesome. I can, I'm just going to give you a reality. I've been going down, up, and down Osborne Street, crossing the tracks. I had a person that got seriously hurt riding a bicycle in St. Mary's, a good friend of mine. And there was, you know, there's things that need to be taken care of, the, you know, very important issues, not Band-Aid issues, but issues that need to be taken care of. This person was seriously hurt and, and he's just now getting to walking again. This was four months ago that he got hurt. And that, riding his bicycle and the issues that are on Osborne and, and the roads and the sidewalks, I mean, you go over by the waterfront park, that road, that sidewalk on Osborne, that's a freaking nightmare. I feel safer walking down anything but that street. And, and we got issues that we need to take care of, have to take care of, can't put Band-Aid on it, that need to be taken care of to protect our citizens and keep our citizens safe. And why I want the best in city hall, I know that it ain't going, if you did, there's a half twos and wants and wishes. Half twos, you gotta have to get back into the new city hall. You have to get in there. So wants are nice. Wishes down the road. Let's take care of the half-two items now to get in the seat of the city hall. And then use the, the money that we're spending, that we want to spend, or that we envision spending in city hall, that's, use it to take care of the sidewalks and the railroad tracks and the issues that are really affecting our area and our citizens in a huge way. Don't put a Band-Aid on it. Fix the damn thing and make it right. There, I'm done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a comment about the, the city hall expenditure. You know, I, I see it as a placeholder of funds for when we're ready to act, that the money is there and available. We don't have our final approved bid. You know, we have to make some changes, obviously, to make sure it's a economical way to get in the building, but we do have to have the money earmarked in the budget to, to be able to proceed when that time comes, and it needs to come sooner than later. Every month that goes by, we're spending just over $14,000 a month in that building over there that's just sitting there. So it is a bleeding ulcer that we do have to, you know, get, get out, out of this building to get into that one. The expenditures on that building are, are pretty high. You know, the, the power bill is, is up there. We do have staff over there and the work has been done. That was the estimate that I was given when I asked what the cost of that building was monthly, and it's just over $14,000. So while we still have to approve any expenditure when we get to those bids, just because the money is sitting there in the budget doesn't mean we're spending it right now, and we still have to approve any expenditure when it comes to us. So it has to be there, and when we come to something we can all agree on, then we'll approve that funds from the budget to, you know, accommodate and get us into that new city hall building when it comes. So I just wanted to speak on that.
I think Mayor said this in another meeting, and I think he makes a great point, just how fast everything goes up. So I'm very, I'm actually very torn on this. I agree with Mr. Jones, Ms. King on it. We were not part, at least me and Ms. Lynn were not part of council when a lot of these plans for city hall went through, and the bid that came in at 10 million doesn't even include the roof. So it would have been more than that. So when you look at that, you say, "Wow, we should be lucky to have 6 million." But there's things I'd really like to, she said the right words, "go back to the drawing board on." Like, we don't need the drop ceiling. We don't need council chamber offices. We're never going to go in our offices.
Yep.
So there's a lot of wasted money, I think, that we can really kind of cut and subtract from there. Yes, we want to, I don't, you're not going to hear argument from anybody on the dais that we don't want to be in there and we don't think it's the right move. I think everybody agrees we need to go there, but we really need to take a hard look at what we can subtract and do right to come off that $6 million number, in my personal opinion. But I agree with the sentiment. Things go up quickly and we don't have the time to play with because you see what it was at 1.8 and now being 6, and, and it only goes up from there. And I don't know if there'll be lower bids, but I think we need to take a hard look before we spend money that we don't have. If we had it, it'd be a different story, but we're banking on money we don't have.
Yeah.
And taking $3.5 million out of the fund equity account when we have maybe possibly nine named storms coming for hurricane season is not the wisest thing.
Yeah.
And I just want to be prudent and I want to be physically responsible before we take a big leap like that.
We can wait to hear.
Ms. Connor?
Well, you know, I've been sitting here listening to everybody talking. To be totally honest with you, I'm torn as well. You know, I, I think every single one of us up here would love to be able to move into a brand-new place up there tomorrow, but I mean, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. If it's not feasible, it's not feasible. So that's about all I've got to say.
So one of the things I'd like to comment, I guess, on, on this, the city hall, is the, obviously, if the real estate transaction that, that we've alluded to doesn't occur, then, you know, that funding won't be available. And like I said, we'll have to come back at some point and actually look at bids and approve contracts in order to actually spend the money. Having that money designated in the budget for that is just that. It's designated in, in case we get to that point, that we have budgeted for it, quite frankly, and it's there if we need it. It won't, if it's not there, we, we can't spend it, you know? We, we don't have the luxury that, that the federal government has in that aspect. You know, we went to, to the state Capitol when we went up to GMA and toured the facility and had our picture taken on the grand staircase, and there's an awful lot of mahogany and marble up there at the Capitol. And, you know, I don't think any of us are expecting to have that type of facility for our city hall. But I do think that the citizens of St. Mary's deserve a first-class facility. Nothing, everything that we do doesn't have to be secondhand or, or, you know, shortfall, you know, to the point where we don't complete things and we don't have a, a place to do business and a place to have developers and, and new citizens come in and, and be in an appropriately professional operation. So we do have to go back to the drawing board. There have been some changes and some things that were in the initial plan, which most of us weren't really involved in. You know, there was an anticipation at some point that the Joint Development Authority and the Chamber of Commerce might be co-locating with us, and that now looks like that's not in the cards. And so the space that was designated there, you know, maybe doesn't need to be built out, you know, like it originally was. So I think there will be some cost savings that can certainly be found, and we'll be going back through that process in order to try to get, you know, the building for, you know, the best value we can get and that meets our needs. You know, there are places within the building that, that, you know, have to have ceilings. You know, finance has to have ceilings and HR has to have ceilings and, you know, their IT, you know, has to have ceilings, those kinds of places, you know, that, you know, so there are just, you know, a lot of things to be figured there. But, you know, I've talked to a lot of people as well, and they want to see us in that new building, and I'd like to see us out of this and, you know, so that we only have the expense of one building. But it's got to be done in a prudent and, you know, resourceful, respectful manner, you know, of our tax dollars. And I think we're all committed to that. We, you know, we kind of get to it in different ways, but I think we, we all really, you know, want what's best for the city. And, you know, we're not, we're not set about spending money that we don't have. And, you know, and part of, part of that large bump in the budget is due to this land's potential land sale that is putting that money there that would go towards, you know, that increase. So it's not all, you know, going from 20 to 26, just as a matter of taxes or, or, you know, budget. But, you know, with that, you know, one of the other things I also wanted to comment on is, you know, we, we talk a lot in this dais and this council chambers about the aquatic center, about the marina and recreation facilities. And, you know, when I look at recreation facilities, I think of things like the waterfront park downtown. You know, we're not collecting money for everybody who walks through those, those gates and those sidewalks. That place loses money every day, you know? But it's a, a resource, and I remember when they built that park, and there was a lot of dissension among the community that was being spent for a park and it wasn't going to be commercial space and those kinds of things. But I think by and large, the great, great majority of our city thinks that's a resource for our town, and it's a jewel to have that down there at the waterfront. But it costs us money every day. Those ball fields over on Margaret Street, Sweetwater Park, Nodder's Pond, they all cost us money every day. We don't make money on those, but we don't have a separate line item in the budget that lets you look at that and go, "We're losing money on these fields." You know, if you go to that park, the aquatic center over there, and you see those kids playing, and what a great time they're having. Those ball fields over on Margaret Street, the Sweetwater Park, Nodder's Pond, they all cost us money every day. We don't make money on those, but we don't have a separate line item in the budget that lets you look at that and go, we're losing money on these fields. You know, if you go to that park, the Aquatic Center over there, and you see those kids playing, and what a great time they're having, you know, it's a great recreational opportunity. And quite frankly, it comes at a pretty good value for the amount of enjoyment that those kids get out of that over there. And, you know, I think it's money well spent. And there are a lot of other recreational things that we've been looking at and talking about and ways that we can make it better. Say, there's money in this budget for tennis courts that, you know, we've all been needing for a long time, and certainly Ms. White brought that to our attention. There's other needs that I'd like to see, that the quality of life and recreation improve over time. And we've been talking about ways that we can get to some of that. But, you know, no document's perfect. This is a budget. You know, many of these things will require council votes down the road on contracts. There'll be opportunities to look at them as we go and make sure we're spending the money, you know, in the most prudent way at that given time. But overall, I think we have a fairly good document here. So, is there any other discussion before we call for a vote? Did we not do that?
Do that first, or?
Yeah, we should do that.
The motion, sir, that was after you all get done.
No, I thought we did. We had a, well, we had a motion that said we started discussing, we never actually took the vote.
We approved the consent agenda.
We did.
We approved the consent agenda.
But we didn't approve the actual agenda, I'm sorry.
It's a good catch.
So, let's stop real quick, I guess, and...
Well, Kim, we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. Okay. All right. So, does anyone else want to speak on the budget? All right. I'll call the question then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just have one aye. This is in favor of the budget. We're voting on the budget approval. Just one aye? And any opposed?
Aye.
All right. So, we have four opposed, and any abstained? Huh? So, abstaining? Okay.
Sorry, I heard that. I have one for, Councilman Ingram, four opposed, and one abstention.
One for. One abstention. Mr. Connors abstention, the other four opposed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, let's move back then now to the approval of the agenda, because we did not do that. So, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nasmento. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we have approval on the agenda, so...
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say something in regard to the disapproval of the budget. The city does have to have an approved budget in place before July the 1st, which is the first of the fiscal year, FY '26. I would, if not, we can't operate on July the 1st. So, it's up to council how they want to proceed with this. We would like to have at least two weeks before implementation on July the 1st, because we have to manually put the whole budget in for the city. So, I just want to let council be aware of those facts, or the city won't open on July the 1st.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
That we have a work session on the 16th?
16th would be, I don't think we need to let it go till the 16th.
No, I'd go sooner than.
If we have to vote and approve on it on the 16th, then we need to kind of work these issues out.
See what calendar.
Before then. But if we were to vote on the 16th, would that, that would...
No, I'd shoot an aye.
I'm just, I'm...
Yes, sir, that would be fine, or you wanted to do a special call council meeting sometime, you know, a day or two afterwards, you know, that's up to council's discretion.
How about a work session on the 9th?
I won't be here, but...
You won't be there?
But, I mean, y'all have a quorum.
Can we do this, I'm just asking, can we do this, go where we sit, vote on, and leave the City Hall out of the budget?
I don't think we can do that.
Sir, you can also let me know after today's meeting if you'd like to do that.
We'll do that.
Okay, a question I had was, is that I'm okay on everything in the budget except one thing, City Hall. And, you know, $6 million is not what I want to spend. We've got other issues. Can we just vote on the major items that we all agree on and leave the City Hall out of the budget until we can, and we can amend the budget? We can amend the budget.
Sir, that, what I was going to suggest, if you pass the budget the way it's presented right now, this, like the mayor said and Chad, this is budgeted. Just because it's budgeted doesn't mean that's what you spend.
Right, but I'd like to just say that we have, you know, we have $7 million in revenues. 3.5 comes out of fund equity. I'm not happy with that number, so there may be some other things we need to cut. And then we have another 3.5, and I hear you about the City Hall, but I have some other concerns, too.
So, is there an amended motion of any sort? Can we do that at this point in time? Or does it need to go back before?
Do a work session.
Do a work session.
I think everybody wants a work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, work session. I had, we'll set that date. 9? We don't have it right now, but we'll...
The 9th is a good date.
Yeah. So... We have to make a new motion, but that vote is already, I'm just saying, a new motion could be made, yes, no?
I guess, what would the nature of the motion be? Because I don't think that it would be a good idea to orally amend the budget and vote on it without it being clear and right. I think before you vote it on budget, it needs to be clearly stated in writing what you're voting on.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move on to Item F then, which is our quarterly Town Hall and Development Progress Update, which is scheduled currently for July 3rd. And I, for one, would like to see if we could set another time and date for that meeting. So, I wonder if the following Thursday would work for everyone on July the 10th?
July the 10th, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, July.
July.
Fourth, it's the 3rd, July.
This is our quarterly Town Hall meeting. It's scheduled right now for July 3rd, the first Thursday in the month. And I'm asking if we can change that to the following Thursday, July the 10th.
I just wanted to let you know, Mayor, in case you all were not aware, sometimes you all don't like to be at the same time as another meeting. On July the 10th, right now, in Main Street, you'll have Gateway taking place, so I just wanted to let you know, and that's only at 5:00, so...
Yep. So, we could just do the Town Hall? I think we're still okay at 5:00 with that, everybody?
Yes.
I'll be late.
July 10th? July 10th, at 5:00.
Okay, for both, sir, or just one?
We'll do both.
Yes, sir.
Five and then Town Hall, and then at 6:00 for the quarterly update, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Is that all right? All right. Then with that, Madam Clerk, we have an announcement of our calendar.
Oh, I didn't hear the motion.
I'm sorry, yep.
Motion by Mr. Ingram?
Yep, motion to change the Town Hall.
Meeting to the 10th.
Second.
Second by Ms. King. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Madam Adams.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, announcement of the calendar.
On Tuesday, January 3rd, at 10:00 a.m., we have a bid opening here in council chambers, followed by the 2:00 request for proposals for design and construction, administrative services for Exit 1. On Wednesday, June 4th, at 5:00 p.m., we have the DASM meeting in the Main Street office. On Thursday, June 5th, at 2:00 p.m., we have the Tree Board meeting in the Planning and Building Conference Room, followed by the 2:30 p.m. invitation to bid for La Mig here in council chambers, followed by 3:00 p.m. invitation to bid for Expanade Boulevard Phase 1A Access Road Project. On Friday, June 6th, here in council chambers, we have St. Mary's Municipal Court. On Monday, June 9th, at 8:30 a.m., we have the Downtown Development Authority meeting in Main Street. On Tuesday, June 10th, at 5:30 p.m., here in council chamber, Planning Commission meeting. On Thursday, June 12th, at 9:30 a.m., we have the Orange Hall Management Committee meeting in the Main Street office, followed by a 2:00 p.m. invitation to bid for local asbestos removal, the St. Mary's Recreation Swimming Pool that would be here in council chambers, followed by the 5:00 p.m. Gateway meeting, and a 6:00 p.m. Hospital Authority meeting at the New Senior Center. And on Monday, June 16th, at 5:45 p.m., we have an alcohol public hearing for Riverwalk Pizzeria, followed by the 6:00 p.m. council meeting, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, council member comments? Anything they want to add? And, okay, I have something.
He does.
Go ahead, Al.
Oh, yeah, I'll try to pull it up wherever you word for it. Tomorrow, we have a meeting at 10:30 in the morning with the fire chief, police chief, public works director, and critical individuals involved in the St. Mary's Fourth of July Festival fireworks. And so, just letting you know that we're trying to get everything finalized and done with that to keep the department heads happy, all the department heads happy, and to get ready for the festival. The key thing for us is that our fireworks are costing more than we wanted, Burke. I need you, bud. And if anybody wants to give money, write a check to St. Mary's Kiwanis Club to help us offset some additional expenses for the Fourth of July Festival. It'll be an awesome fireworks display, and it'll be synchronized to music, and Angela Litter will put it on the City of St. Mary's page, okay? And that's all I have. Thank you.
I think Charlie touched on it earlier, but, you know, this Saturday, there is, you know, probably my favorite fishing term of the year, the historic St. Mary's Fishing Classic, and also the Rotary Has Their Duck Race right this Saturday. So, I hope I'll see you guys down at the park.
Yeah, there's the Hello Summer Festival, and there's also an included craft beer tasting that's going on as well. You can find information there, I know, on the Rotary website and Facebook page. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you to each and every person that comes to city council meetings, because your heart's in the City of St. Mary's, and you want what's best for the City of St. Mary's. And I can assure you, everybody up here wants what's best for the City of St. Mary's. I can guarantee you. Some tough decisions we have to make. Some of them are not somewhat popular sometime, but it's not made just to be made. There are, there's a lot of things that go into it when we do vote on certain things. So, thank y'all very much for showing up. Thank you for your input. Continue to come and continue to let people know where we can hear your voice and everything else. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Can I, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rassley, second by Mr. Connors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Yes, sir.